Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors Joint Meeting with the Planning Commission. At this time, I would like for Ms. Steele to call the role for the Board of Supervisors.
Mr. Gibson.
Here.
Dr. Orr. Mr. Hudson.
Here.
Mr. Smith is not here. Mr. Crisco?
Here.
And Mr. Bizani is not here. And Mr. Nikosia?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Mr. Meyer.
Abigail, could you call the role, please?
Mr. Richardson.
Here.
Ms. Johnson. Mr. Meyer. Mr. Gray. Mr. Johnson. Mr. Weaver.
Okay. Thank you all. Mr. Smith will not be here tonight. He is home, trying to get himself feeling better, but he will be back for our next meeting. He asked me to just say briefly that he will not be here and he's sorry, but he needed to take care of himself this evening, so we'll have him back at our next meeting. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and a further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next up, we will move into our public comment period. Speakers, when you come forward, please state your name, your magisterial district, and keep your comments to three minutes. Thank you. Okay. Seeing none, I know Ms. Cronin told me there was one comment sent in, so we'll get that now.
Thank you. From Carl Lindsay in Hayes. Hello, my name is Carl Lindsay. I live on Eastview Road in Hayes. I'm speaking on my own behalf and those that hear what I'm saying about the end of the tolls on the Coleman Bridge. I deeply and truly believe that we have not heard the last of the tolls. May it be a few years or a decade, but we have not heard the end of the toll story. In order to secure a brighter future in Gloucester, we as a county must decide that an ordinance must be passed to forever block any and all future tolling of the Coleman Bridge and adjoining roads to and from Gloucester lest we find ourselves in a dimmer light, that of VDOT and/or one of the many foreign toll companies imposing tolls and financial burdens on us as citizens of Gloucester. And given the right conditions, we will find ourselves told again, and this time it will be, it will not be $2. Do we not have a right to be financially successful, or is that we, or is that we have as a county and an area have decided that it is better to put our hard-earned money in the pockets of very wealthy people who do not have our best interests in mind? If we as a county are disposed to higher taxes, less control of our futures, and/or lack of representative government, then we should all endeavor to just give our money away. But in the alternative, if we as a people decide that we do not want to give our money away in tolls collections and whatever it could be or would be called in the future, then we should say no and enact a body of law that forbids anyone from charging a toll to go to our homes. I myself, from the beginning of my residency in Gloucester, have paid the toll to be allowed to go home because the alternate route is approximately 66 miles to avoid the toll. Whatever we as a community or as a people decide to do will absolutely decide the fate of both Gloucester and of the many people who live here and call it home. As a people and as a community, this is where I live, and as such, my one acre is my home and land, and no one may take it from me. Should not the same be said of our money and our future. A second point of contention, Gloucester Council needs to determine a course of action for acquiring the Toll Plaza at the Coleman Bridge. If not for other reasons than because it is on land that is part of Gloucester Point and that is part of Gloucester. The reasons behind why it is necessary is that VDOT is planning to tear down the toll station and expand the road to at least six lanes. With that said, I've been told that the Toll Plaza costs $6 million a year to run. I have a harder time believing this as toll takers do not make much money, and the toll booths are rather old and don't look to be air-conditioned. So I have a hard time believing that a plaza costs $6 million a year to run. Once again, do we as people allow VDOT to dictate our priority in Gloucester? These are the things that we will someday wonder if we could have done better and maybe made a wiser or better choice. The choice to not allow external and foreign interests and those of people who decide that we need to be either exploited or taxed or told. If we decide here and now, like I have, that there are things that I will not partake of and things that I will not give money to, we can have a better future. I will not give money of a great many things that did not earn it, and others should see this for what it is. The choice is yours. That was the only comment.
Thank you, Ms. Cronin. We will now move on to our county administrator items.
Mr. Crisco, I was planning to make an announcement about this being the last board meeting for Mr. Baines to be attending before his retirement. I don't know if it might be possible to add county administrator and push it back?
We can, we can, we can, we can bring it back. That's no problem. We'll do it towards the end.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay. We will now move to our regular work session agenda. The first item up is a recognition of Louis E. Sireo for his service on the Planning Commission. I will come up here to this podium and read that proclamation for him. And we will, we will be right there. Whereas the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors established a planning commission by resolution on May 25, 1965, as required by the Code of Virginia, and whereas the purpose of the planning commission is promote the orderly development of the county by advising the Board of Supervisors on matter related to long-range planning, amendments to the zoning and subdivision ordinances of the county, as well as to review applications for amendments to the zoning map and the review of major subdivisions. And whereas Louis E. Sireo Jr. was appointed to the planning commission on February 17, 2012, and served on the commission until June 30 of 2025, when his term expired. And whereas the planning commission, the Board of Supervisors, and the community at large benefited greatly from Mr. Sireo's input on the planning commission based on his knowledge and involvement in the community and his longevity and experience on the planning commission. And whereas during the tenure on the planning commission, Mr. Sireo served as Chair of the Commission from 2014 to 2016. And whereas, in addition to contributing to the development of the comprehensive plan adopted in 2016, Mr. Sireo was involved in the development and recommendation of several key planning projects, including the Gloucester Courthouse Village Subarea Plan, as well as the District, as well as many significant and complex code amendments, including the residential mixed-use district, sand mining in the SC-1 district, internally illuminated signs in residential districts, a revised planned unit development, PUD district, reduction in rezoning fees, removing the B3 office business and HC-1 Hamlet districts from the zoning ordinance, solar facilities and park parcels, and improvements to the subdivision ordinance, and most recently, the six-year process of updating the entire zoning ordinance. And whereas Mr. Sireo also participated, you were here a long time. It's whereas Mr. Sireo also participated in many major land use applications, including rezonings for Coleman's Crossing, Timmerneck PUD, now Macha Comoco State Park, Fiddler's Crossing, Solar CUPs, the village's amended rezoning, Main Street Landing, and others. And whereas Mr. Sireo served on several committees as a member of the planning commission, including but not limited to an ad hoc committee to provide recommendations for the use of cargo containers for storage, an ad hoc committee to discuss the modifications to the signed ordinance in order to permit agricultural businesses to have off-premise signage in the Highway Corridor Development District, and a committee to provide recommendations for accessory residential dwelling units. And whereas the Board of Supervisors wishes at this time to recognize and thank Mr. Sireo for his dedicated time and effort that he committed as a member of the Gloucester County Planning Commission, and whereas, speaking on behalf of Gloucester County Board of Supervisors and our citizens, I have the pleasure of representing, presenting to Louis E. Sireo this resolution of public recognition for his many years of volunteer service. Now therefore be it resolved that the Gloucester County Board of Supervisors' sincere appreciation and gratitude are hereby expressed for Mr. Sireo's distinguished service, and he is commended for the manner in which he has carried out his duties, responsibilities as a longstanding member of the Gloucester County Planning Commission. And this was signed by our chairman for this, for tonight's meeting.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Yep.
No big speech. Lou, you'd be glad to know that in planning commission tradition, I'll be much more to the point. Okay. So Gloucester County Planning Commission is pleased to honor Louis E. Sireo Jr. in recognition of outstanding service to the county of Gloucester and as a member of the Planning Commission, February 2012 to June 2025. If I may just add a comment, it represents about 150 meetings that you've attended on a volunteer basis, plus hundreds of hours that were spent in preparation for these meetings. You've made a major contribution offhand, I won't mention it. I can think of one issue, major issue, you and I were on different sides on. And the reason why I didn't mention the issue is because you were right, so I don't want to politicize it too much. But Lou, thank you very much for your service. Thank you. Now you may make a speech. Okay. Well, I don't have a speech, but I'd want to thank the Board of Supervisors, first off, for appointing me 12, 13 years ago. I have enjoyed it. I enjoyed my members that are on the board. I've learned more from coming to the meeting and being on this committee than if I wasn't on it. Anybody who can serve on a committee like this should do it. Just getting a little bit slower in age, so I have time for me to get off and let younger people to come in and take over the, over the time. Again, thank you. I appreciate it, and I appreciate all this. Thank you very much. Oh, by the way, I meant to say our staff, they kept me alive this whole 13 years. Thank you. Okay. And I'll leave that to y'all to your fun.
Okay, moving on, we will now get to the next item on our agenda for this, for this evening, and that's the Comprehensive Plan Update Process Results Discussion. Mr. Sean McNash.
Good evening, Board. Just take a second, let us pull up the presentation. And planning commission. So yes, good evening, Board, good evening, planning commission, good evening, steering committee, and all who are watching. We are recapping the comprehensive plan discussion and review that was conducted over the summer. So we're going to start with talking about the methodology that we used. We're going to move on to summary of the results. We're going to touch on unanswered questions and unaddressed items. Some of these can be talked about and figured out today. Most of those unaddressed items, unanswered questions are for future meetings, but we want to put it in your mind so you can think about them as time goes on. Starting with the methodology. So our initial review was used to determine what components needed to be updated. So what sections of each chapter? We went section by section for each chapter to determine what was needed to be updated. So we ended up, as staff, reading the entire comprehensive plan to make this determination. Some general assumptions were made before we went through this review, such as the tables, the figures, the maps would most likely need to be updated in their entirety. We'll get to what that looked like. I have a summary table for those, as well as sections. When it came to the text sections, we used two criteria to separate them into kind of buckets when it came to determining the update. So is it required by state code or is it not required by state code? And then also, does it need to be updated or does it not need to be updated? And if it needs to be updated, is the update a revision or is it a removal? So that created four categories. One being that it does need to be, or no update needed, no matter whether it's required by state code or not. The second being it's required by state code and an update is needed. Third is that it's not required by state code, but an update is needed. And then the fourth is that it's not required by state code and determination that it can be removed. These are very select circumstances for this fourth. We performed this review over a three-month period, and we're here in August to talk about it. So in May, we had a work session. We introduced it, talked about the background, focused on vision statement, introduction, and some appendices. In June, we had a work session where we talked about existing conditions, economic development, housing, and transportation. July's regular meeting, we didn't have anything on the meeting agenda, so we used that time to talk about natural resources, cultural and historic resources, and our more recent amendment to the Comp Plan, the Public Utilities Amendment. And then the work session in July we used for community facilities and services and the future land use chapter. And we're here today to talk about what came out of that. So to summarize it, we'll start with the general summary, looking at each text section by the two criteria required by state code and if revisions were required. In all, about 75% of the sections are required by state code, and about 75% require revisions. Maybe not the same sections, but 75% for each of these. One caveat I want to make clear when it comes to required by state code is that state code speaks in a general sense when it comes to studying and documenting different aspects of the comprehensive plan. So there are some sections that we determined were technically, like technically fulfilled the required-by-state-code aspect, but could be removed because that aspect was also fulfilled by another section in the chapter. So because state code is general in how it describes what needs to be in the comprehensive plan, when the plan gets more specific, it usually utilizes multiple sections collectively to fulfill that. And so when we determined that something could be taken out, that was because we also determined that that requirement was met elsewhere. Looking at the tables, about 80% were required by state code. A lot of these are demographic-related tables, and then almost 100% of them required revisions. And then finally, looking at the maps, similarly, all of them were determined to be required by state code to help meet that criteria in one way or another, and almost 100% were required to determine to need revisions. So summarizing some minor revisions, the biggest one is to update or confirm information in the chapter. So we have reports from our local areas, like local departments, some of our regional planning commissions that are out of date, different studies that were done by housing committees or parks and rec. There's other areas where new data is available, like the census, the 2020 census. And then changing conditions, like the Coleman Bridge toll, where that needs to be updated and reevaluated and determined the impact of that. Another section is adding details to chapters, like what I talked about with the Coleman Bridge toll, new details as to what would be included as a result of that toll coming off. Adding more information to maps, and I'll touch on that a couple slides from now. And then adding an introduction section to each of the chapter's goals, objectives, and implementation strategies. Each chapter has a goals, objectives, and implementation strategy section, but not each section had an introduction leading into that section. And we felt like it would be helpful to have an introduction leading into that for each chapter for consistency's sake and for context's sake. And then finally, removal of information or sections, tables, or maps because it's out of date and the information's no longer available, or it is current or more current but not available, or there are old appendices, like the different surveys that were conducted to prep for the 2016 Comp Plan. Some more major revisions. One big one is focusing on how land use information and data speaks within our comprehensive plan. So in our existing conditions, we have a map and a table that has about 22 categories, and consolidating that to more, to a more digestible map. And this is focused on current land use categories. So there's fewer categories, it's consolidated, it's more understandable, more readable as a map as well. But then looking at the future land use, it's leaving those categories as is, but evaluating each category on an individual basis, as far as what revisions may need to occur. So the current categories consolidating future categories as is with revisions. For village areas, which are the Gloucester Courthouse area, and then we have a Gloucester Point Hayes Plan that focuses on that village area, keeping the guidance, especially in relation to density and uses in those areas, general in nature. Similarly, for areas outside of the village, keeping that guidance, such as non-residential uses that are permitted, general in nature. And this is specific to the existing conditions and future land use. But then looking at, as a kind of general status quo, especially outside of Development District, but in also in certain areas in the Development District, that our, our starting point is that Gloucester is rural and scenic as a general character with select areas having other non-rural components, such as business areas and areas along 17, areas where we have higher densities and such. And, but having the rural and scenic kind of be the starting point as the general character, especially outside Development District and in some areas inside of that. Another major revision, like I talked about, was the impacts of the Coleman Bridge toll. So using data to describe what the potential impacts could be in anticipation of that. That is going to depend on how quickly we want to move to get this finalized. So since the toll just recently came off, if we're looking to get it finalized in the next year, we may not be able to describe those impacts as well as if we were taking a longer timeframe. And then adding a narrative with those potential impacts and differences without the toll. So we'll have that in some way, but what it looks like may vary. Another major revision, we're looking to keep the goals, objectives, and implementation strategies in each chapter, but we want to be more specific in our goals, objectives, and implementation strategies. There are also timeframes that are associated with them, whether short or long-term, and we're looking to remove those timeframes and just focus simply on those three levels, goals, objectives, implementation strategies. And then like I talked about, adding introduction section to each component. And then adding a couple sections to the text. So in our existing conditions, we have some special areas that we called out, and what the planning commission felt and the steering committee felt would be pertinent is to add the state and federal parks as special areas, since there's some planning considerations we can do there, but we don't have full control over planning considerations there. And then also adding farm information, especially on century farms and cultural and historic resources. And then finally, adding a table of details to the comprehensive plan in regards to housing, or not regards to housing, in regards to existing demographics with age that illustrates not just the age distribution at its current time, but how that distribution changes over time. There's a desire to add map details to the comprehensive plan, so similar to adding the century farm table and details. On our prime farmland map, removing developed areas from that, since developed areas would not be used for farmed areas, and then also illustrating the farm locations on the prime farmland map so we can compare the location to the farmland that evaluates it based upon soils. And then also adding transportation maps in our transportation chapter that are specific to the two village areas that detail transportation, the current aspects, roadway, sidewalks, and such, as well as possibly future planned aspects. We want to update our Gloucesteri appendix to align with our zoning ordinance definitions. We want to remove the remainder of the appendices B through I, since those are outdated, they're surveys and such, in preparation for the 2016 plan. And then add new appendices to the comprehensive plan, starting with taking the history, the comprehensive planning history, which is the history of comprehensive planning from the first plan effort that we have ever done in the county, taking it from the introduction chapter and moving it to the appendix as a standalone appendix. And then similar to what was done for the 2016 plan, any surveys that are performed during this process, creating appendices out of those. So that is, takes care of the general discussion or general description of it. I'm going to pause in case we have any questions that I need to answer at this point. All right. So now we have some unanswered questions, unaddressed items. Like I said, most of these are just putting the thought in your mind so that you can be mindful of it as we go through this process. But the first slide does focus on things that can be discussed at current or future meetings. So one thing that has always been a desire is being more specific as to what rural character means. So staff wants to begin a discussion and get community input to understand what rural character means from the community standpoint. There's a survey exercise that we can use, that we utilize mapping or visual components to begin defining what rural character means, and we can establish different sets of questions for different parts of the county, since rural character may feel and look differently based upon different areas of the county. And although this may require additional input to further kind of boil down what this term actually means, this is kind of a starting point of this discussion. So this, this surveying exercise, we don't have it fully ready to go where we would turn it on tomorrow, but we've started the discussion internally, and we would love to make this kind of our first, or one of our first steps that we take moving forward as far as getting community input. So that's one thing I'm going to touch on when we get to next steps. Another thing that we have talked about that would be, we would look like additional input on, we had a discussion on affordable housing, and what does affordable housing mean? State code defines affordable housing, but what does that mean for Gloucester? We had a discussion about, could it be a comparison between the monthly income and the housing availability? So one household's monthly income compared to the housing availability at different housing prices? That's what the planning commission and steering committee suggested. This discussion started with a discussion on, well, can we compare it to 30-year mortgage rates? That was a comparison we were not as comfortable with. So just putting in your, your mind to think about how we can start to quantify affordable housing for Gloucester. And then finally, adding a new chapter for either energy, or more broadly for technology, since solar kind of caught us quickly off-guard, and we had to respond to that, starting to prepare for other energy and technology planning. Not necessarily planning to bring it in, but planning for where it could be or should be appropriate if any sort of energy or technology uses were to be appropriate in the county. And then alternatively, what would not be appropriate, and specifying what isn't and why it would not be appropriate. So if we do get applications or are approached about it, our, our comprehensive plan clearly speaks to that. We would also incorporate our public utility guidance into that chapter as well. So I want to pause here, and if we have any thoughts or any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thinking, questions? Yep, please, Ms. Steele.
Sean, you mentioned the state code on what affordable housing is. Well, there's also accepted definitions. I wouldn't say that they're necessarily by code, but yet they do, they are required for different grants, submissions, and other things. Did the consideration for 50,000 or under in total population, which is defined by USDA as being a rural community? which is defined by USDA as being a rural community? I missed that if that discussion came up versus portions.
No, that, that wasn't discussed in terms of affordable housing. There were times where we.
No, I'm sorry, I meant the same thing, that there's code, but back up to rural character. So USDA defines rural as 50,000 or less. When Gloucester County goes over 50,000, even if the northern part of the county was desolate with people, we would not be able to acquire the grants and things, some of them, that, because we would no longer be a rural community. Other things they'll take by census tracts and things, but it just may be a factor, not just what people feel rural is, but what, what is defined by rural, either by the state or the federal government.
Yeah, so that wasn't part of the discussion, but that can be something that is described within the text, because that is clearly a delineating mark that kind of separates rural with something non-rural, whether that's urban, suburban, or otherwise. So we can utilize that as, as one of the components that we, we speak about. What we were talking about a lot was what aesthetics, what uses, what development, density, and look and feel reflects rural, which is why we wanted to use visual and mapping components to try to define that. Because when people talk about rural, they usually start from their internal vision and then translate that into the text and the description of an application, not vice versa. But we can use that.
Any other questions before Ms. McNabb moves on?
Thank you. So for future meetings, I have a couple of slides on, on input that we'll be looking for at future meetings. So one of the biggest will be redefining our vision statement. It's clear that we want to pare down our vision statement from a two paragraph statement to a more summarized one paragraph statement, focuses on Gloucester and some other discussion points that we had at our very first meeting. Part of the discussion was providing alternative statements in a survey format for the citizens to vote or rank or do some sort of input method on, so that they can state what most reflects, what they feel like would be a vision statement appropriate for the comprehensive plan. And so that alternative statements idea was really critical to the planning commission, that not just giving them one statement to, to give input on, but giving citizens multiple statements to say what they liked about it or didn't like about it, what they liked most and what they didn't like the most. So that's one of our starting points when it comes to the vision statement. We're not looking to start this part first, because I think we need to have a little bit more discussion to clearly generate these alternative statements before we push it out to the citizens. We also want to describe, determine how to revise and describe housing needs within the housing chapter. At the time that the comprehensive plan was written, it was close enough in proximity to a housing study and close enough in proximity to when we actually had a housing department that we could utilize those resources, but we don't have those resources anymore. As far as the study, it's, it's out of date, it's a 2008 study. We don't have the department as a current department. And so Bay Aging is our housing resource. So we're making sure we're coordinating with them to see if they've conducted any studies in the recent years, especially probably post-COVID. And then determining, after having those conversations, if additional research, additional work needs to be done to describe housing. But starting with having a discussion with Bay Aging and see what comes out of that. Another point was determining what to include on our planned projects and proposed projects maps within our transportation chapter, so we can revise those appropriately. So although those maps sound similar, planned projects focus on what is currently funded and proposed to be built based upon being currently funded, whether at a preliminary stage or a final funding stage or somewhere in between. Proposed projects are more longer term, 10, 15, 20 years out, that projects are not funded, but we would be supportive of in pursuit of future funding. So one of these projects was a second crossing. And we determined that because of the lack of traction with the second crossing and discussions and work, also because of the likelihood that there's a very limited location for that to go, it would be supported for that to be spoken about from a general statement standpoint, saying that if a second crossing is possible, Gloucester's supportive of it. Gloucester would desire to utilize it for tourism purposes, transportation purposes and such, but not necessarily mapping out a location, because the location would need to be determined from an engineering standpoint and that may not be exactly where we would map it out. And it's changed over time. So those are a couple of things we're looking to revise related to transportation. And then any questions on this? All right. Another thing that we want to do is perform a new Parks and Rec Facility and Services survey. So that survey is over 10 years old at this point. But it was important to the planning commission and the steering committee that it's Parks, Rec, and Tourism that is kind of the lead agency on this. And we're a more coordinating agency. Even though it's going to go into the comprehensive plan, they're the experts when it comes to these services, these facilities, these needs. So letting them lead how that survey looks, feels, operates, and utilizing our, our work to coordinate it so that it ends up in the comprehensive plan in a useful way. We also want to reevaluate guidance on future public water and sewer expansion. We want to evaluate it based upon project approvals, including anything that's undeveloped. So it's not just evaluating it based upon its current service area and service numbers, but incorporating projects that are approved and have the right to be served by these through their approvals, accounting for those and making that evaluation aspect in it. And then also considering any funding and plan improvements to these facilities in our planning efforts as well. And then finally, we want to update the school capacity figures. We've spoken with Gloucester County Public Schools. And the way they've described it to us is that our capacity numbers for our, for our comprehensive plan are not quite accurate to the actual capacity that they believe to be true for their facilities. So once again, just like with Parks and Rec, public schools are the experts in this area. So coordinating with them to come up with more accurate capacity numbers as compared to something that's more of a X amount of students per classroom.
Sean, a question. The schools think their capacity is too understated or overstated?
They feel like it's overstated. Now, they would have to do a, a more full evaluation to, for us to understand the degree that it would be overstated, but they feel like that the facilities are overestimated as far as their capacity.
Sean?
Usually there's two capacities that they use. One is the building capacity itself, and then the other one is the academic capacity. That you could put 500 people in a building, but you couldn't put, you know, 20 classrooms. You couldn't have 20 different classes in that building to accommodate 500 students.
Exactly.
So there's an academic capacity and then there's a, a building capacity. So that's probably what the difference.
Yeah, and that's why we want to work with them closely to come up with something that's more, more clear. Because, for instance, we, we've gotten a couple rezonings. And then we're, we have one with Fox Mill that's still on our, on our radar that have clear impacts to public schools. And so we need our capacity numbers to be accurate, or at least more accurate, for us to have a good idea when we evaluate an application relative to the comp plan, the guidance of the comp plan, but also the limits that the comp plan sets, whether it's limits for capacities, limits for sewer and water provision, or any other service that we provide as a county.
I'd like to share a couple of things that might be of interest of statistics and information that, excuse me, hopefully will be available very soon. Mr. Baines and I met with Ms. Legg and asked her, based on some of the work that she's having to turn into the state, that talk about the water withdrawal permit and the, the service area. And she's already worked with GIS to kind of bubble out like maybe 1,500 linear feet out from where we currently are and taking into account potential subdivisions that are more likely to happen or not, which you can take in and out of an equation. But we asked her to look at the trend of commercial use and what percentage that's growing at of total number of gallons that are used in a year by commercials, entities. And then if that's growing at a 1%, a 5%, whatever, to keep that trend going for the next 15 years, because she has to do this 15-year lookout. And then we asked her to take the number of homes that we have, the residential connections, and the average number of gallons that are used, and look at the combination. So in other words, if you subtract from our total ability of what we had, if we were at maximum capacity that we're allowed with surface water and the RO plant, which there's some changes there because people, the DEQ wants less and less use of RO plants. But taking the total capacity, subtracting what we have in commercial growth with anticipated growth, or commercial with anticipated growth, looking at the number of homes that we currently have and looking at what our capacity would be left. This only deals with public water, obviously not the other parts of the county that would be on well water. But I think we can get to an idea of what, more information on what's available if subdivisions are coming in and wanting to hook up and what is our capacity. There were three factors that we talked to her about that we know would definitely change the results of this. One would be if we expand the service area, which that's been discussed, possibly to go a little bit further north. Change in the commercial trend. If all of a sudden we attract somebody who's a big water user that we weren't expecting, that could throw off what you anticipate to happen in the next 15 years. And the big one that we're also hoping is a good thing is the reduction in the amount of treated water that's currently wasted that they're fixing those issues. So I think within this process, we're going to be able to, or she'll be able to present to both boards, here's some information on what we really have left of our water system. And the other, I guess, factor would be if we had another water supply system come online. I mean, that's always, would change everything. But I, I'm really excited about being able to give you some, again, statistics that can help you with planning. Can you come forward so they'll hear you? Sorry, George.
Mr. Baines, microphone.
Yes.
I was trying to hide in the back. So we're also have presented at least once to the board a 10-year CIP for what we need to do with our water system right now to, to make it better and to have more redundancy in it. So the second line up there, consider funding and plan improvements. We've got a list of planned improvements that goes out 10 years right now. So we've got that, plus what Katie's going to be doing on the analysis of how many homes we could max have in 15 years with the system we have. We can come to you and say there's a capacity for another 7,500 homes. And then as each new subdivision came in, you know, we're taking it away from that. That, that's the max we could do before we have to do something different. But yeah, Carol's been working on that with Katie and it's, it's going to be fun to see when that gets done.
So I just wanted to point out that you're in the process of answering the question that we, that we had. So two questions I do have further. Does this also include the sewer?
The documents that she has to provide are specifically dealing with water. But we, the sewer capacity is, I don't think there's any lack of capacity there. It's just the cost and asking the board approving and, and HRSD taking that on and enlarging their area.
And is there a projected completion date on the study?
I don't think it's going to be long. I mean, I think, I think we'll know within the next two to three weeks to have, we'll kind of work it through and see based upon all the other things, the balls that she's juggling in the air. But it's, it's not six months away or anything like that, no.
Excellent, thank you.
I was going to say the planning commission had asked to have Katie or someone from that department come and do something like that for the planning commission. So it might be just something we do at the next joint meeting.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Sean, go ahead. Oh, Mr. Sanders.
I don't know whether this is the, the time, but I've, I've got a question. We were going back to the definition of rural.
Yes.
We are, and where I'm coming from, I am a, I own, grew up and own property in a very large rural area in the valley that is all agriculture. We have two major things here in the county. We do have the northern end of the county that is rural and farming. But nowhere on any of these things are, is the waterman. That is just an equal, they should be equal when they're, when we're considering things. And that needs to be included in that definition when you're rewriting it. Because we've basically three, we've got the rural, we've got the waterman, and then we've got the 17 corridor, however you want to call it. So we are a county of three different types of facilities. What do I want to say, citizens that are involved. And I remember, I've got another thing I will say. I moved here exactly 52 years today. Guinea was thriving. I can't imagine, I don't remember how many seafood houses and stuff was there. I think it's down to three now, or three and a half and some working. The other thing, when you're talking about affordable housing, and again, this goes back to 32 years ago today. I moved into the first large apartment complex that Gloucester County ever had, at Gloucester Point. And what I'm going to tell you, you're going to pass out. My rent was $150 a month. I had breakfast yesterday morning with a lady who just lost her job as a toll taker on the bridge. Her rent next month is going up to $1,500 a month for the same apartment that I paid 150 for. So some really look, we have to really look at some of that affordable house. And she, she says, I don't, I can't afford it. She says, even if I can find another job, it's, it's gotten, you know. So please keep that in consideration. And, but the other one in our overall rule of whatever definition of rule is, rule has several definitions and we need to work on.
In, in our existing conditions chapter, there is a section that's literally titled, "Working Uses on and Off the Land." So we have it incorporated. We have a working waterfront intern that did work over the summer. She'll be presenting to the planning commission later this year. And we're, she has some recommendations related to zoning changes, but she also has recommendations related to comprehensive plan changes. So we'll be incorporating that as well. And then inherently, we will be updating any information and data and such related to that. So we are incorporating and updating it, but it is a good point when it comes to rural character that we need to include that when it comes to the questions and aspects of the survey that we, we generate for the citizens to give input on. All right. So the final slide, and I have two subsequent slides to help understand this, is discussing the future land use classifications and revising the maps accordingly. So like I talked about, these are going to be evaluated on an individual basis as we look at them individually, look at where they're proposed, to reevaluate what is appropriate, where they're appropriate. And some specifics when it comes to future land use classifications are starting with reevaluating the boundaries of our development district. This district focuses on some core aspects such as the hot, the, the principal population center, including higher densities being inside this area, this being served by water and sewer, this being the employment center of the county, and some other similar aspects that go with those. And so evaluating the boundaries of development district and making sure that it accurately reflects where we want more population, including possibly more density, if we want more density, where we want water and sewer to be provided to or extended to, where we want our employment to be centrally located in, and, and all of that, so that our development district aligns with our vision for all of those aspects. with our vision for all of those aspects. Similarly, we have rural service centers in our more rural areas of the county at crossroads off of 17, and reevaluating those individually to determine whether those are appropriate to be called out as rural service centers, since what is most commonly located at those areas, there might be one or two parcels zoned for business, whether B1 business, which is our standard business zoning, or B4, which is our rural business zoning, and then the rest might be a low-density residential or even agricultural zoning. So determining on an individual basis whether those rural service centers are appropriate, because rural service centers are kind of the, the, not necessarily development district for the rural area, but the crossroads where we could support businesses in a limited circumstance to help provide provisions to the rural areas of the county. We also want to reevaluate the future village development area. Well, let me, let me go forward to give you an idea of what we just talked about. So the bold line on this map is your development district. The blue circles on the map are your rural service centers. So to give you context as to the two things I just described. Now I'm going to go back to talk about what is two maps from now. Actually, I'll just go to the map, and I'll talk myself. So we have a future village development area, right? Kind of, and in that center area, it's at the intersection of Hickory Fork and 17. That was identified as a future development, village development area in our comprehensive plan. And after discussion, the belief was that it would be appropriate to consolidate some of it into the Gloucester Courthouse Village Development Area, because our Highway Corridor Development District extends partially down to that area. And then for the remainder of that Village Development Area, instead of calling it a Village Development Area, where you could do higher densities, walkable neighborhoods and such, because that's just not the character in that part of the county, maybe doing an, what they call an Employment Service Center. So kind of a, if you think of a rural service center, but along 17, that's just employment-focused. So businesses to support the, the different businesses along that area, and just focusing on a development area for businesses solely and not collectively for village uses, which would be both businesses and housing. So that is what's proposed for that purple hatched Village Development Area. What also is proposed is to determine the locations of any unmapped classifications and illustrate them. So as you can see with this map, we have our general future land use classifications in the different colors. But then we have our working water fronts identified in the blue dots. We have rural service centers in the blue circles. We have our development district in the more bolded black line. And so we have a number of other areas that are classified in our future land use chapter. And what it says is that any unmapped classifications should still be utilized for planning purposes, but it's hard to plan and utilize them when they're not mapped out. So if we have a classification, making sure it's mapped out in some manner so it can be utilized for planning purposes, and if it's not mapped out or can't be mapped out, maybe reconsidering whether we want that in our future land use map, in future land use chapter. So that is what I have for us. The next section is related to the next item on your agenda. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yes, Mr. Sanders. Thank you. My comments are basically overarching on this comprehensive plan issue. It's basically thinking about what we want to be as we grow older in Gloucester County. And we all know the tolls are coming off the Coleman. And, and it's going to be my view, because it happened before, when the tolls came off in 1975, from 1992, we were the fastest-growing county in Virginia. And it's probably going to be the same thing here. So if, I'm not going to be here to enjoy the decisions you guys are going to make in the future, but, you know, you're going to have to decide, do we want to become a rural county, or do we want to allow development to come in? Because it impacts a lot of things. It impacts the schools, it impacts fire and rescue, it impacts our sheriff's department, all the other accessory, accessory items that you're probably going to have to pay for as the county grows. So with the feds coming down, with the Federal Reserve probably going to reduce interest rates to maybe 200 basis points by the end of the year, it's going to make housing more affordable, it's going to stimulate more development in the county. And so the Board of Supervisors and the planners are going to have to decide, do we want to allow this to happen? Something similar to what we did with solar, solar panel development here in Gloucester County, we kind of cut that faucet off. We might want, you guys might want to think about, what do you want this county to look like? Is it going to be the land of the life worth living, or is it going to be the land of the white, life worth developing? So it's one of those things, big things that everybody's going to have to decide on. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? One of the things that I, that I read here, and I know that Mr. Wilmot presented a memo to the Board of Supervisors, I think back in February, on the definition of affordable housing. And I think it would, one of the first things we need to do as a board is start having that discussion on how we want to make that fit Gloucester County. Is it the 30% of the $84,000 median income, or do we have to massage it somewhere else? So I think one of the first things we need to do as a board is get that on an agenda for discussion, so we can start figuring out how we want to right-size affordable housing to Gloucester County. Because I know what the one by right place, their houses are starting at half a million dollars. That's their basis. I mean, that's, that's a, that's a, that's a large, that's a large mortgage payment. I'm going to make quite a bit of money for, to handle that as a 30%, so I think that's where we need to start for the board. And we can also discuss rural character when we're having that discussion, even though I think that's going to remain a moving target, that we'll have to try to capture every six months to every year, depending on what happens in this county. I don't know if we'll ever get it completely identified to where it'll right-size us.
One thing staff had spoke about internally in response to that discussion was the Planning Commission and the Steering Committee wanted to look at what rural character was like in the point, and in Gloucester Courthouse, and up north. But it also might be pertinent to speak about, what does rural character look at, look like when it comes to commercial uses? What does it look like when it comes to residential uses? Not just looking at it geographically, but looking at it use-wise. Because rural character commercially is differently, different in nature and style and size, and somewhere for residential, and all the other aspects.
I wanted to address your first point on affordable housing. And as, one of those things like on Jeopardy, I wanted to address it, but it wasn't, hasn't hit the button until I had a, an answer in my mind. But the, the difference is there's a statutory or regulatory definition of affordable housing. I think it's typically some percentage of the median household income in a given area. People below that income level, houses that they can afford. And I'm thinking of more in terms of, as a county, what kind of, what kind of people in terms of income and jobs, do we want to make sure that they can afford to either rent or buy a house of their own? You know, and if, for example, is not 80% of the median income, but can a young married couple that, that both have, you know, $12 or $15 an hour jobs, what kind of house can they afford? Where do we want to put that line? So we define it more in, can our young and up-and-coming people entering the workforce, where are they going to live, and can they afford to live here? So I want to put it more into the context of describing the population, as opposed to putting a cut line that the state would, or the federal government would, if that makes sense.
Mr. Sanders, I'm going to get a little personal. Your first contract as a teacher 52 years ago, how much was it?
A month.
A year.
A year.
You can't do that kind of math.
$7,300. I remember that because it started in 1973.
It should have started in 93. But, but, so if you look at those numbers, it hasn't gone up 10 times the percent amount for a teacher, but it's gone up considerably more for that same apartment to be 10 times more.
Well, it's gone, well, um, um...
But my point is, it, it's a supply and demand issue. The rent, the housing is up because there's a low demand. And we need to figure out, we need to have a definition of what affordable housing is. But we don't need to necessarily give an exact number of how many houses we need to be affordable housing. Because back then, 52 years ago, there was probably one income earner in that house. Now there's two, for the most part. So if you look at it that way, so many different demographics and everything has changed, it's hard to do an apples-to-apples comparison from 52 years ago, unfortunately. But the price of housing is high, but I don't think we need to, we need to give a definition, but I don't think we need to expand on it too much.
Ken? Um, wait. So in general, like Gloucester is a land worth living. When I was driving to Newport News the other day, I saw a billboard right before the monitor mayor Mac that was advertising for Ryan's Run. And in my opinion, I've been to plenty of planning and zoning meetings, and when the Fox meal came about, the developer was saying that they were here to provide housing for Gloucester. Well, in my opinion, if they are advertising way outside of our boundaries, who is this affordable housing for? Now, they were saying housing was going to be upwards $500,000. Well, is that for, compare it to maybe Hampton, Newport News, is that affordable housing for people outside of Gloucester? As well as, I mean, Marshhog Villas might sound, you know, good for someone living in Gloucester Point, maybe that's affordable, but for a detached, single-family home, can someone in Gloucester afford it, or can it be affordable for someone outside of Gloucester to bring in? Now, I'm not against housing, that was just, I feel like if we were to advertise it, maybe advertise it for Gloucester, and, you know, I don't know what, who we need to be in Gloucester, but just a thought that came into my head the other day while driving.
Mr. Paulson.
I'm going to go backwards for a minute to expand to what Mr. Bizani was saying about figuring out what we want to be when we grow up as a county, and open development up, try to, try to restrict it, keep some of that rural character. And, and we can all sit here and talk about what we think should happen, and I'm going to go ahead and state the obvious, just to, just to state it. One very important part of this process is going to be in listening to what the citizen input is around here. I mean, we, we can sit up here, but that's who commission members and board supervisors members are representing, and that's going to be a very important piece of the puzzle to, to take into account as well.
And to tag on to that comment as well, it's a good comment. You know, I, I hear people all the time saying, I moved to Gloucester County because I got, I wanted to get away to the rat race, even across from York County, and they wanted to live here because it was so rural. So again, we're, you know, you good fellas are going to have, or maybe young lady up there, may have to decide, what do we want to be? What, what, what is, you know, affordable housing? I mean, I know housing is affordable, but it's all relative, and it's a subjective thing, right? It's a moving, as we just discussed, it's a moving target that you can't really get your hands on. So the big decision is, what do we want Gloucester to look like? Do we want it to continue to be rural and develop the business along 17, because everybody wants to have some commerce along 17? But when you go left or right off of 17, it's very farm-like and rural? Or do we want to let development come in? Those are two big questions we have to ask ourselves. Dr. Warren?
Yep. Just as a comment to Mr. Bizani, you know, Mr. Bizani, you know, you and I and the other board members have always been advocating business-friendly. And I think we have to step back a little bit, and what do we mean by business-friendly? And I think that may be playing into the same types of questions that revolve around, you know, the people moving into the county that want services that are amenable, you know, restaurants, facilities like that. So they're all intertwined, and as we just heard, I think we need to listen to the people as to what they want, and, you know, hopefully make decisions that are in light of, you know, how people really feel about the county.
I'm sitting here listening to what we want the county to look like in, as far as development, and yes, it does involve business, one factor, two factors that nobody's really even talked about, but boy, we better consider it. How close are we to not having a volunteer fire department? If the county keeps growing, how long can the volunteer fire department keep providing the necessary service? That's one. Second factor, that landfill is going to fill up eventually, and then eventually the county is going to have to bear the cost for trash disposal. I think we need to keep both of those factors in mind when we start looking at zoning districts and build-outs and homes per acre.
Yeah, Mr. Richardson, the board will be having a discussion about the landfill at one of our meetings in the fall, correct? And I think that might be an appropriate point of discussion about the landfill and, you know, its lifetime and what happens post, and landfill, yeah. But thanks for the comment.
Yep. Mr. Gibson?
Yep. Thank you for the presentation, and I appreciate it, and appreciate all the hard work of the Planning Commission and the Planning Department in your work on this effort. Just one question, what do you mean by rural service center? I'm not familiar with that term.
Yeah, so that was defined as a half-mile radius at these different crossroads. There are a number along 17, but most of them are off of 17 that are still major roads, like Guinea Road, Ark Road, Hickory Fork Road, Bellroy. Yeah, so...
Okay.
Yeah, so Bellroy, Mark, Rick Store, Nuttall Store, those intersections, and defining within a half mile of that, that certain services that are limited in size, limited in, I don't want to call it density, but intensity, that would provide services to the rural area, like a corner store, things like that, could be supported, since most of the guidance for these rural areas focus on agricultural and residential uses exclusively.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you.
If I could just add to that, so if you remember when we were doing the zoning ordinance update, we were struggling with the Glens area because that was a different rural service center, and because it's two major arteries, like we then decided to go with the B1 zoning up there versus, you know, would you want something Glens and that intersection, would you want that same thing at Nuttall Store or at Woods Cross Road? So those are kind of, they're meant to be smaller scale, serving the rural communities is what they're meant to be. Whereas the Glens area serves more of a regional community.
Right, okay. Just, just some general comments. Obviously, this is an important endeavor, talking about the future of Gloucester County, and I, I think sometimes we have a, a wide divergence of how people want to see the future of the county. You, you have some, understandably, who, who want to maintain... You, you have some, understandably, who, who want to maintain the rural character of our community. I, I share that belief, and I think that's very important. We have such a beautiful county, uh, open green areas, the waterways, the Chesapeake Bay, and we need to preserve that, and I think that we also need to be mindful that our infrastructure can only be strained so far. Our Seventeen is bursting at the seams, our volunteer fire and rescue is overloaded with calls, and that is going to be a significant challenge as we move forward in, in the county. Uh, our schools, despite many recent improvements, particularly at the high school, uh, still needs, uh, further, further upgrades, uh, to, to provide the best education possible. Um, so, so I share those concerns, but I think we also have to be mindful of the fact that we do, we do need to have a vision of how all those components can work together to support our community in the future, meaning, um, we, we have to be open to some positive changes in these areas, in our schools, uh, in our parks and rec, uh, in, in those, those areas, because they all work together to attract the types of businesses that will support our community, will provide the tax revenue that we need to provide the services, to provide the fire and rescue, and so, we just have to be careful about a knee-jerk negative reaction when these types of things, uh, options become available, because we have some in the community, like, don't put any money towards Parks and Rec, don't put any money to any upgrades to the schools. It's, it's just a no, no, no mindset to everything, and I think that's, that, that holds our community back, so we, we just need to be open to a more positive vision of what we can accomplish in the county, uh, rather than just, let's burn the bridge, burn the boats, and no, no further improvements to our county, let's just keep it the way it is. We, we've got to be open to some, 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 uh, improvements in these areas. I thought there was a recent discussion we had about the development that was improved on Seventeen, it was on a three-acre property, uh, and I thought the developer made a very good, um, point in that, in what he had proposed, and it did pass in the Board of Supervisors, he noted that of the housing that was available for your middle-income residents, that the, there were about forty-two homes in, in the county that were available for, for, uh, for, for people at this income level, but they were all, I, I believe, very old properties. And so, to get into those properties and to bring them up to speed would, would take a, a, a bigger investment than just the price tag, and so what he was proposing was the type of housing for your teachers, for your law enforcement officers, for your fire and rescue workers, uh, for your nurses who we need at the hospital. And so, uh, I voted for that because I felt like that was a need in our community. There may be other developments in other areas of the county that, that we don't want, uh, but, but I think we just have to, to look at each proposal on a case-by-case basis, um, and, and be open to those options, but at the same time, looking at improvements in these other areas that will, will help our county.
And the last point's very critical as far as looking at it case-by-case, because that's what the comprehensive plan really is about. It's not just planning and stating this is what we want to be about, but then comparing that collective texted vision to the practical applications that we receive, whether it's a reselling application, a conditional use application, special exception, or even pursuing funding applications and such, and making sure everything is compared to that, and making sure that the plan, the comprehensive plan sets a vision and sets guidance that supports what we want, and then we can compare and determine what aligns with it when we see that come in, in future years.
Mr. Nakosh.
All the discussion, and, and all of my questions have been answered just by listening to, to everybody, everybody's comments, except for one thing I would like to add. As we look at these areas that we discussed, uh, and we talk about fire and rescue and impact and, and, and impact of, on the schools and impact on this, and that, that's all important, but one thing that I would like for us to kinda keep in mind is, when we're looking at, when we're looking at, uh, applications that come in, one of the things that, that I would like to see, if possible, if it comes down the pipe, is, what are we doing for our youth outside of the classroom? What are we bringing to, what, what opportunities are, are coming, gonna, gonna come down that we're gonna get an opportunity to look at, that, yeah, we're taking care of them in school, all right? We're taking care of them in school, making sure they got, we're trying, trying to give them the best that they can have in the building, but what, let's look at some things and hope some things come down the pipe that can be developed outside of the classroom, so that we don't have the teenagers that I love very much, and you know I'm a high school teacher, so, I'm, I, I love my teenagers, but I know what they're doing on the weekend because they tell me, because they don't have anything else going on, so, that's, that's big, so, in the, as we look at that, let's also keep that demographic in mind. What can we do for our youth in Gloucester County, as well as all the other good things that this plan looks at? Let's not neglect that demographic.
Hey, actually, I will never forget the recent meeting we had at the town hall where people are asking us questions, and Mr. Hudson asked the youth that were here, "What do you want?", and it was a very interesting response, which had to do with exactly what you're talking about, Mr. Nakosh, the youth. What do we do to attract young people to this community and their children, and also the youth that are moving along and stuck on their phones and stuff like that? You know, what kind of activities can we provide them? So, um, again, Mr. Hudson's question to those two people or three people really kind of was very enlightening that day.
Mr. Hudson.
But the one thing, if you remember, they were contradictory to what the majority of the people here wanted.
Well, but you're, you're exactly right, that's what was very, very striking about it, but I think you're asking them that made them really rethink about exactly why they were here, and I think maybe that one question you asked them made them think about why they were here and what their real intention was.
Then they stopped showing up.
Yeah. So, I know we're not going to accomplish all of this tonight, but, again, I, I think that the board needs to provide some more definition to rural character, um, as well as trying to figure out something for affordable housing. The problem with the housing is these guys that are building these things are allowed to make a dollar, so if they can't build that home, those gentlemen or the, the folks that are out building these houses, they're all allowed to make a dollar. So, until they can find something that they can build that falls into that, I mean, we can't control what the developers develop, to, to an extent, um, I don't know how we'll, we'll, we'll control that, but I, I think the first step is the, the board handling their, their items and getting them to the Planning Commission so they can get more information together, so that we can look at these future meetings that I think is our next discussion topic.
And before we move on to that, with your point of the developers', um, price points and desires and all that, with their, their buildings versus affordable housing, that was part of the discussion, that we get developers who propose rezonings, and they say, "This is what we feel is affordable." We don't have a number or any semblance of that in our comprehensive plan to compare what they're saying, "We feel like this is affordable," to what, what actually seems to be affordable, so that's where nailing that down further will be helpful when the Planning Commission and the board are reviewing applications, so we can have a more accurate comparison to what the developer's portraying, and if that is realistic to what is affordable for Gloucester.
So, ready for the next agenda item?
Yes, please.
All right, so moving on, we're gonna talk about next steps, and we have a discussion on future Planning Commission meetings for our Planning Commission to give input on. So, staff recommends a couple of steps that occur in the next six months, so between now and the end of the year, and then doubling back for another discussion on the work that occurs during that timeframe, and so that's where I want to, the timeframe that I want you to keep in mind as we describe this. So, performing the additional surveys, starting with, coming up with a survey for rural character as a starting point, not an ending point, to begin the discussion and to allow that discussion to evolve over time, so we, and we feel like this is a discussion that's not gonna happen in a matter of two or three months, but it's a discussion that we're gonna need to take the majority of this update process to really come to a clear definition of, so we want to start that early. And like I said, we have a survey, we have a, a vision for how we would conduct that survey started, so this is a good opportunity to start it early. And then the second part is working on formatting, style, and timing for the vision statement and the Parks and Rec facility surveys, so, not necessarily coming up with those surveys, but beginning internally the discussion of how we would do those surveys, what manner and sources we would utilize those surveys through, and then when we would do timing. So would those ser- surveys occur in person at community meetings? Would they occur through online resources? Would they occur in various other formats? So, starting that discussion. So, as far as surveys, rural character actually conducting initial survey, the others having initial discussions on how we can approach those other surveys. The other thing we want to do in the next six months is to begin working on what I have been referring to as low-hanging fruit, so any demographic data, any information we need to confirm or update, working on that, and then periodically updating the Planning Commission and Steering Committee on the progress between now and the end of the year, um, and then, I think I have, so updating them through their, the meeting materials, and then meeting periodically as well. And so, we would include updates in every Planning Commission meeting with the desire to meet two months from now with the Planning Commission Steering Committee, so we have a two-month timeframe to say, "This is what we worked on," and then two months after that, so a meeting in October with the two groups at the Planning Commission's regular meeting, and a meeting at their December regular meeting to give them an update on it after two months of work each time. So, so that's what we want to work on. Our thoughts with working on this low-hanging fruit is right now, we don't know what percent complete we're at. We know what percent complete needs, or what percent needs revised, but we don't know what percent complete we're at. With six months of working on the low-hanging fruit, we can have some semblance of, an idea of saying, "We are at this percent complete," and then what we would need to do to go from that to getting closer to a hundred percent complete with this document, but we really can't do that until we take care of the easy stuff that's gonna drive the more harder discussions.
Ms. Steele, I have one question for you, and it may, may be for Ms. Cronin, if she might remember right off the top of her head, do we have a retreat scheduled yet for our Board of Supervisors?
No, we talked about, uh, just kind of casually about it being after the election, since we're gonna have at, at least two members coming on new.
Right, because I think it would be in our best interest to have those folks there, so, as we move into next year, we're gonna have, instead of taking a meeting in January or February to bring them up to speed, to get them called up sooner rather than later if possible, so I wanted to make that point, but I know you had something else you wanted to add.
Thank you, I just wanted to make a comment, um, about the surveys, and I'm, I'm forgetting a term, and probably Steve can help me remember wherever he wants.
He's over your other shoulder.
He'll, he'll remember because he's, he's a, a techie person on, on surveys and things. It's really easy to do surveys, and of course, there's all different kinds, where we just are asking people, "Do you want this?", "Yes?", "No?", or rank in priority of things, but that doesn't include an educational component, and, and going back to what Mr. Gibson was, was saying, you know, knee-jerk reactions, sometimes you don't understand the consequences. So if you say, "Do you not want?", or, you know, "Do you want this?", everybody's like, "No!", or they say, "Yes!", but they don't know what that means. What does it mean to the real estate tax potentially? What does it mean, you know, to, uh, this, you know, other kinds of services or things that we offer? And, and the type of survey that I'm thinking about, we did many, many years ago in Parks and Recreation, where we met with the groups, and that's what I'm trying to, focus groups, thank you, that's exactly what it is, and so, it, it might be that there are people who are very interested in what would they like the future of the county to be, and that maybe we, before jumping out to just getting seventy-five percent of the people say this or that, but they don't really understand what they're saying yes or no to, um, is that we have some discussions where there can be interchanges, where people would say, you know, "I don't like that", I mean, we see this all the time with code enforcement. Everybody's, you know, "We are a property rights state, we are a property rights community", until somebody next to you does something you don't like, and then all of a sudden, we're like, "Why are you allowing that?", and we have constant conflict with that, so that's the kind of conversation, and we did some of this during, you know, the, the ordinance reviews, but getting into a little bit more of what does it mean, especially like with affordable housing. Other communities have mandates that subdivisions build so many affordable units that, when they come in, that's part of what they do, because they know they've gotta make the money, and, um, they're wanting to do these bigger, but this is the trade-off, so they're not going and, to the federal government and getting a huge HUD loan program that allows them to make a tonny mon- money by, by, you know, building low income, it's a different way to get to it, so those are, I, I just think some interactive conversations, town halls, focus groups, would really help people, um, give us better information than just to check yes or no.
All right, and then the last part of this six months' work would be, start talking about any community meetings that we will be doing in likely twenty-twenty-six, um, after we do some of this work, after we have an idea as to some survey results, other ideas to how we would conduct other surveys, and determining how many community meetings, what forum, what nature and style of the meetings, and that would happen at this October and the December Planning Commission meeting that we have with the Steering Committee that we're proposing.
So, is it possible that sometime in January, you, you all, with the Planning Commission and, and these, this group here, give us an idea of where we're at with completion? Because I know Working Waterfront's gonna go into this, and we're not, we haven't had that presentation yet, so is it something that we could look at, maybe at our first meeting, or even our, I mean, not our organizational meeting, but our first meeting in January to get an update as to where we're at, what we're looking at, then maybe we can have another discussion on our timelines from there?
And that's actually my next slide here, is that, so this lays out just what I described, so, Planning Commission.
Just one question on the Working Waterfront.
Yeah.
With this individual, are they embedding the role of aquaculture into working waterfronts? Because obviously, you know, we have had quite a few aquaculture operations, and they're expanding rapidly, so is that going to be embedded in this, or is that a separate topic?
So, the short answer is yes, the long answer, I'll let Ann elaborate on.
So, um, the work, our intern focused mainly on actually, like, kinda focus groups, she talked to individuals in the, um, various industries, so, you know, from the mariner operators to aquaculture, um, people, and then, and then she did a, a survey, she only got a hundred, actually ninety-nine respondents on, on that of what, so her ideas were more recommendations, and we will still have to come up with the, um, the actual ordinance, but she has some great ideas, I've literally been thinking about it all the time, but it's gonna involve more public outreach, but like, maybe, like, the parent, like, maybe doing an overlay in the parent that we allow more uses by right, y- you know, and kinda focus in that area, but like, you know, where Mob Jack Seafood is, there's only a little bit of area that has industry, so, that's a real residential area, so maybe we, we only just do those, that little street, Jarvis Street, you know, so those are kind of our recommendations. Do we want to do a whole waterway? Saris Creek's gonna be more difficult, you know, because it's a real mix of residential and working waterfront, so, um, that's where I think we are gonna have to do public outreach to see, to have an idea, and then see if the community really wants that idea, so she's gonna be definitely a big picture.
Mr. Chair, one, one comment, one, thank you, one comment to all of that, uh, your survey that you were talking about, Ms. Steele, one of the things that, you know, you might ask this public is, you know, "What do you want?", and they'll say, "Well, we want a new public park," or "We want, we want a newer school," and, and everybody, "Yeah, we'd like that," but the other part of that is, you don't tell them what it's gonna cost.
That's, that's the consequence.
So if seventy percent of the people want a new school, or they want a bigger park, then, and then they find out it's gonna mean twenty cents on their tax rate, they're gonna say, "Well, nah, I, I'll go to Newport News or Hampton's Park and, and join myself over there." So you gotta have both sides of the equation, you just can't just do one side, "Oh, do you want a new school?", "Do you want fire and rescue?", "Do you want, um, bigger parks?", you, you gotta add to the cost of that, and, and what is it gonna mean to people who are, and I'll say this again, we are really, if not now, we are approaching, becoming a... I'll say this again, we are really, if not now, we are approaching, becoming a bedroom community of retirees that are living here. And I'm one of them. And I don't want to pay 20 or 30 cents on my tax rate for, for the house that I live in to be, you know, taxed to death for things that people who come here, you know, come in one or two years, I don't have that service. I wish I had that service here. Had a woman next door to me just moved in a year and a half ago, asked me, why don't we have trash服务? Why doesn't the county pay for trash service around here? Had it Newport News, she says. I said, well, how much more tax do you want to pay for that? I mean, they don't think of the other side of the cost of, I want this, I want that, but then what is it going to cost me at the end of the day?
I agree.
Right, and that's, that's why they, they're discussing having these public meetings so that maybe we can, you know, have a more of a, a roundtable discussion where, hey, if you want a sports complex built here and it's $85 million, well, here's the upfront cost and here is the cost to operate it every year as long as we, we own it. So those are things that we have to work into these discussions as we get into the timeline of, of future discussions on this. Because there's, there's more to the story than, you know, a lot of times than yes or no. So.
I did, just really quick if I can, we do have some funding to help with this, that the staff has been so tight, they haven't spent any money yet. So it might be that we could get some consultant to help move some of these things along. Maybe that's the, the input aspect to it. So, because I know y'all want this sooner rather than, than later.
So I think we need to keep in mind, to a certain extent, the comprehensive plan is aspirational. And what we want to do is describe the county as we'd like it to be within some degree bounds of reasonableness. So when it comes to the discussions as to how much you're going to pay for this, or how much is this going to cost or whatever, that's something that's a very important decision for the board of supervisors. But for this particular product, we just want to make sure we describe something that's realistic. And then you guys get to make the hard decisions about whether it's A or it's going to be B.
In my lifetime, it's, we've been both. I mean, I can remember as a little kid leaving up here where Gloucester East Baseball is, where there was no Bill Hudgens in front of it. You left there, there was a gas station across the street which is a 7-Eleven now and you went south. There was a, I think it was a Little Sue, and then there was what is now Mob Jack Tavern was the only restaurant before you got to where McDonald's used to be, which is now O'Reilly's. And it was nothing. The stoplight at the south end of Main Street, it was all woods and an airport was there. I mean, it's, it's, there's a lot. There's, we've had two Walmarts built in this county since the toll has been on this bridge. So I don't, I don't see the, the 85 cent toll for if you have a fast toll or $2 if you don't, being the gateway or the jetway or the launching point to all of a sudden Gloucester having 60,000 residents in the next 10 years. I just don't see it happening. But there, there, there are things that we're going to have to get ironed out to make this aspirational plan make sense for us. So Ms. DeSoto.
So I guess, Sean, you want to put the schedule up again?
Yep.
So I would just want to make sure that everyone's okay with this. The one thing about meeting with the steering committee that we need to meet here so that they can, you know, sit at the DS with, with the planning commission. So that's kind of our potential schedule. And we might just, sometimes it's easier just to meet here all the time because then you don't keep moving.
Yes.
For your advertising. So, so we just wanted to make sure you were okay. And it sounds like you'd like to try to do the joint meeting again in January, or just have us come to the planning commission, to the board and, and kind of give an update?
I think, I think in, in January, we're going to need an update. And hopefully by then, we can have a better definition of rural character and where we want to be with affordable housing number because I think it's a little inflated for what our number says because it's a gross number and the net and, you know, everything else you got to figure out to, to make these numbers work. But knowing that we're already up against a September deadline for discussion topics for our, our first meeting, you know, we could maybe look at having our first discussion starting at the second meeting, which is our joint meeting with the schools. I mean, and we, we, our window is, is tight as well as, as far as getting this discussed. But I think we have to do our work on that. And then I think an update, and then when we have that update, whichever meeting in January, we can set our schedule from there, I would think.
And you're all good with the, the staff starting to work on updating, you know, the, as Sean said, the low hanging fruit and all that?
Everything that you can easily do, I would say, or easily do. Everything that you can do without assistance from us, I, I would get it done as, if you can.
Okay.
So to clarify the update discussion, do you want it collectively amongst these three groups to be the update, or do you want just staff to update the board solely?
I think when we get to January, we want the update. I don't think we need but staff here for that update as to where we're at and what level of completion. And then we can, we can figure out from there, the meetings with the planning commission, the focus group, either, either group or both groups, and, and maybe schedule a town hall or two to have the, these groups discuss it with the five to 25 people that show up when we have these things.
Sounds good.
One idea, you know, it might be nice to have a focus group with the EDA, planning commission, maybe the school board and the board of supervisors. So all the decision making board. Because when I was at the meeting with, where you had the joint meeting with the EDA, they talked about expanding water and sewer north of the county. And so it'd be nice to get the groups together, kind of, you know, with the school capacity and just everyone hearing the same, same talk, you know, same topics.
Right. Would, do we want entire groups, or do you want to have former group of two board of supervisors, two EDA members, or how do y'all, how do you think that should work? Because, I mean, you guys operate in this space and we have to try to decipher what makes sense for the county. So I think trying to pull that big of a group together would be kind of cumbersome.
Yeah. It's just that I, you know, it's nice to have anyone hear each other, talk, talk about it. So.
Right, yeah. We, we could, we could try to make that work.
Or just invite everybody and whoever can show up, you know.
And the steering committee does not have to be limited to five people. There can be people added to it, someone from the EDA, someone from the school board, even a youth representative, if the youth representative is interested and desiring. It, it does not have to be limited to five. Obviously, you don't want it to be 25, but adding a couple of people on may not hurt as we go along the process. So the second question that we just want to get clarity on, I'm sure there'd be easy consensus, is just holding for the planning commission, the location for here on out through the end of the year at TC Walker for your meetings. According to rules of procedure, you have to make a decision on your location. If you're going to change it from the Colonial Courthouse to TC Walker, it has to be done at a meeting. So as long as the planning commission just gives the okay for that to happen, that'll fulfill your rules of procedure requirement.
Okay, is the question just with reference to the comprehensive plan?
All meetings, all meetings. The comprehensive plan discussion would occur at your regular meetings in October and December.
Okay, I guess I, I guess that question surprised me.
Okay.
And maybe there's a note I was supposed to read that I missed.
So the reasoning is that the Colonial Courthouse would not support the numbers if we had both the steering committee and the planning commission participate. So inherently, September being canceled, if we had October and December being with both groups, we'd have to be here. And then November would be left to which location do we want, to avoid the confusion of bouncing around.
This is just through the end of the calendar year.
Yeah, through the end of the calendar, yeah. So this is just to avoid the confusion of bouncing back and forth.
Sean, I'm just looking at the tables and maps. Are these tables and maps going to be the same table and maps just updated, or do you think there'll be new maps and new tables?
So in certain circumstances, they'll just solely be updated. And then in other circumstances, they will be new maps. So for instance, something like existing facilities in our community facilities chapter would be just simply updating. We would reflect the new, and the changes from 2016 to now as, in regards to location of county facilities and such. But for planned transportation projects, we can't update, update those maps and the proposed projects can't update those maps without a discussion because it will look completely different. The proposed projects in 2016 are going to look different than the proposed projects in 2026.
Yeah, I'm just kind of looking at your summary of the numbers of tables and figures and all that. And they're pretty extensive and I think they're really obviously relevant and important. That could be an impediment to the timeline unless you've got, you know, people who really are able to play with and understand how to do tables quickly. I mean, yeah.
I personally work as closely with GIS, which is the mapping program, as our GIS department does. So I'm very familiar with the mapping aspect. That will not be a problem for me. I'm also very much like the numbers person for our departments. So the tables won't be a problem either. So my response in general would be, you never know until you try, right? So we, if we could try and see where we get to.
I have to give Sean a lot of credit. He's pretty much taken this on since you all, you know, decided to have us look at it. And so he's done all the work, literally on it. We'll have more help now with Carol Rizzio back and she can, they can tag team it. But Sean is really excellent with maps and charts and, and things. So, but I do, we do have some money if there's things that we need to farm out. We have all the data from the HRTPO and we're a pretty close relationship with them. So we can get the maps from them as well. So I think we're, those are things we'd rather do in-house and maybe things like surveys and stuff where we, you know, might be better to hire consultants for those types of things.
I was just thinking that, you know, based on an initial comment by Mr. Crisco of trying to move the comprehensive plan as fast as forward as we can, not have it, you know, delayed too much, but get it done as quickly as possible. Hopefully in 2026. And I know tables and figures, if you've got good people, that's great because I like tables and figures. I like, I like figures personally.
And I think, you know, the biggest issues will be the bigger decisions of, you know, changes you want to make, like changing the development district, how we want to handle the water and sewer issues. Like, you know, some of the ideas is like, we want this area to grow, but not until we improve our water system to, to this capacity. And so you can make those decisions too. And those are really for the planning commission and board and steering committee and, you know, to work through because those are the big policies and, you know, after you hear from the public. But those, you know, that's the kind of thing that I think took, took us six months to work on freight containers. So, so.
And that's why I think it's best just to give us an update of where we are when we get to January and then we can set our schedule from there. Because you might come to me in January and Sean go, I'm not going to be ready till March or April with what I need to get done. I mean, it could happen. I'm not saying that that's going to be the case, but I think getting that update will, will give us a better, a better path forward.
We'll plan on that.
I do.
Technically, I need a vocal response.
We, we do. I haven't quite gotten into the groove of that yet. So as part of the, the January meeting, I would expect the planning department at that time, at the conclusions of those being, be prepared to suggest a suspense date for the draft comprehensive plan. Because I think that energizes people to a certain extent, having a due date. And also, I guess, since I was prompted here, is there a motion? Anyone want to make a motion to conduct the remaining planning commission meetings for calendar year '25 in the TC Walker?
I'll make a motion that we move to TC Walker for the remainder of 2025.
Do I have a second? You got a motion and a second. And, and to keep Abigail from running down here, do you want to go ahead and take the roll?
You can just do a, a voice vote.
We can do a voice call up. I wanted some dissent to come out of there. Okay. All in favor, say aye. All against? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have. I appreciate the time and input.
Okay, so we have completed those items. I believe Ms. Steele asked if we could move the county administrator items to the end. So Ms. Steele, take it away.
Thank you very much. I wanted to remind the board and to let the public know as well as the planning commission members here, that tonight is George Baines's last board meeting as a deputy county administrator. He will be retiring at the end of August with 36 years of local government experience working for Gloucester County and Henrico County. He is from the engineering, the fact that he's an engineer, a PE, to the IT director, the, the chief information officer and ending his career as the deputy county administrator. George has been involved in numerous major projects in the county. We call George a unicorn for the combinations of talents and experience he has. We're so appreciative for his dedication and the mark that he's left on the county with his work on the reservoir, the 911 communication system, the, the first one where he was up climbing communication towers and water towers and all kinds of things. The landfill, both the old and the new, and closing and keeping us out of trouble with DEQ on this last landfill. Connecting the county to the internet and bringing us into that with, what was it, T1 lines? T11, T1? It's like not siding, but anyway. And then with fiber and numerous other initiatives that he's worked on during his tenure. We will miss George and we wish him the very best. We look forward to seeing what he's going to be doing next and how he will continue to give back to the community and the county because that's who George is. And other than, he's sworn he's going to hang out at the bench out by our building and, and harass us on the way into work and be that concerned citizen. But we do wish him well. And we'll be having some more celebratory things that we hope that board members and others will be able to participate in. Secondly, I'd like to announce that Maria Callaway, our CFO, our chief financial officer, will be promoted to deputy county administrator on September 1st. We're fortunate to have a leader with her talents that, that she possesses. And not only that with her finance background, but in planning and operational management. Maria has served on the executive leadership team for the last several years, learning about all the county departments and helping to make executive level decisions. We're excited about seeing her growth in county leadership and believe that she could be successful in anything she undertakes. And thankfully, that's being on our team. So congratulations to both of you, especially George.
Ms. Steele, Mr. Baines said he was going to harass you all when you came to work in the morning?
He'll have to be out there.
Wouldn't that mean he would have to be there?
He'll be retired if he has nothing else left to do.
He doesn't get there then.
We have completed. Would you like to adjourn your meeting?
With a quick special thanks to the planning department for all the good work they've done up to this point, and for the steering committee for your inputs. And I hope you can stay engaged the rest of this process. I want to thank you. And I'm open to a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I got a motion and a second. All in favor? All against? Okay. Planning commission, planning commission adjourn.
Kenny, this is how you do it. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.